Okay, everybody. Welcome. I am calling this Board of Education meeting to order. It is Tuesday, May 27, 2025. It is 5:30, and we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Lamphier, can you please do the roll call?
Sure. Ms. Darling is not here. I am here. Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Prent is not here. Mr. Claffey?
President.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Daniel Williams?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And we have our, we have Dr. Andre and Mr. Poska, Dr. Scarpotti, and Ms. DeGray, and we have Student Rep. Amit. Okay. All right.
After you do the opening statement, can, oh, Heather made eye contact first. The Pledge of Allegiance, please.
As elected officials, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Okay, so we have no recognitions or presentations, so this brings us right up into our consent agenda. I would be looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. This brings us up to our first public comment question period. I don't see anybody in the audience, so unless a ghost signed up. I'm assuming there are no boo-boos. Get it, ghost.
I got it. I just didn't think it was funny.
Anyway, it was funny. The audacity is funny enough.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, luckily, this brings us right up to Dr. Andre's superintendent's comments. Good luck following that one.
No kidding. Thank you. Celebrating some student achievement, International Film Festival recognition, for the first time in our district's history, our video production students competed in a global film festival held in Prague, Czech Republic. They didn't travel there. I just, it wasn't part of the budget. We are proud to announce the following outstanding achievements. Julia O'Connor won first place for her film trailer, Seven Minutes. Johanna Defosis earned fourth place for her trailer, What I Could Have Done. Yanderson Marty, Evan Tremblay, Mitchell Martin, Orlando Vega won first place for their short film, Dream. These awards reflect not only the exceptional talent but also the global caliber of our students' work. Also, congratulations to Mr. Leone for his tutelage. Our biotech team excels at the state championship. Congratulations to Sharie Mannan, South class of 2025, and August Paquin, North class of 2025, who placed runners-up at the prestigious Third Annual Bio Truck Championship on May 20 in Manchester. Their project, Audio Van, bio-fabricated inner ear cell implant to restore hearing, was developed in their honors biotech and biomedical science course. After advancing through school and semifinal rounds, they presented their audio van in the finals before a panel of industry leaders demonstrating deep expertise and innovative thinking. Battle of the Bridge highlights. Do you know the winners? Okay, all right. Spring victory goes to South, claiming a 9-4 win. However, North captured the fall in the winter. So this friendly rivalry continues to bring out the best in our student athletes and unites our community in a spirited support. Middle School Athletics, last Saturday, we hosted the Middle School City Championships for baseball, softball, and track at Nashua North. We were fortunate to have some great weather and strong participation. Fairgrounds won the baseball championship. Penicek took home titles in softball, boys' track, and girls' track. Regular season play concludes today, followed by the playoff season. The Nashua Athletics Hall of Fame, on May 18, we celebrated a truly memorable Hall of Fame induction ceremony honoring some of the most impactful figures in Nashua athletics. The weekend also featured a ceremonial first pitch at the baseball game. While two inductories were unable to attend the celebration of their achievements, remains a proud moment for our community. And those inductees were a contributor, Al Harrington; contributor Diane Keane; coach Bill Harty; coach George Nukas; student athletes Shaylyn Johnson, North, class of 2009; Kaitlin Ackerman, South, class 2011; Sarah Naval-Gardiano, South, this was before the unification; Nashua Senior High School, class of 1994; Aaron Garikas, Nashua Senior High School, class of 1998; Jamie Franks, Nashua Senior High School, class of 1999; and Matt Shaheen, Nashua Senior High School, class of 2004. And then we have some upcoming events over the next couple of weeks. Scholarship Award Nights, North will be June 3 at 6:30 p.m. South is June 4 at 6 o'clock p.m. Graduations, June 10. North is June 10 at 6:30 p.m. at Stellows. Rain date is June 12. South graduation is June 11 at 6:30 p.m. at Stellows. Rain date, June 13. Bretwood Academy is June 12 at 12 p.m. at the Nashua Public Library Theater. We look forward to these culminating events as we celebrate these achievements and wish the future well-being of our graduating seniors. Thank you.
So many familiar names on that old people honorary list that I may or may have gone nice. Oh, well, just embrace it. This brings us up to our board response to superintendent's comments, so I'll start over here with Ms. Raymond.
I really, really appreciate you bringing us the, all of the amazing, successful things that our students are doing. To have our film students placed first in the world is, it's just, it's just an amazing honor. And so I'm really excited that Mr. Leone was able to facilitate entering the competition and just all the hard work that the students have done, as well as with biotech. And I don't remember if we talked about DECA at our last meeting, but we have kids who are spending a lot of extra time doing a lot of really amazing things.
Thanks. Thank you. Ms. Prent?
No comment.
Mr. Claffey?
None.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to say amazing what our students can accomplish. And the other thing about, about Dr. Andre's comment on the students tonight is we had art, science, sports.
Yep.
Showing accomplishments across a variety of fields. So kudos to our students and good luck to the students coming up on their graduation.
Ms. Gilio?
Thank you, as always, for sharing great news at the beginning of our meeting. It always gets me happy.
Yes. Ms. Daniels Williams?
Thank you. I would just want to say how proud we are as a community for all our students as they round out the 2025 school year. Thank you, Dr. Andre, for pointing out the students' achievements and how hard they've worked in all the different categories that Mr. Johnson has pointed out and on all their educational goals. There's three things that I want to mention that's happening in our community, which is the community music. The Nashua Community Music School on Lock Street is one that supports our community. They give lessons, they do music therapy, and they have some scholarships and summer camps that are running. And for certain categories, it will be free of charge for the summer. I want to remind everybody about the Tree Streets Block Party that is June 14, 1 to 5. It is a community day, and there'll be wrestling, and it is free for the kids. It's free for everyone, for the whole community, as we celebrate an outstanding community. And my third one is the Feed the Kids program. I want to give a special shout-out to them as they're getting ready to feed the community. So thank you so much for all they do.
Thank you. Ms. Lamphier?
No comment tonight.
Okay. And this brings us up to our student member. No fighting tonight, so the floor goes right to you, Mr. Ahmed.
14 more days, guys.
14 days. That is a good clock to have. Okay. So I was actually hoping we could be flexible with our agenda so that Attorney Clausen can talk to us about the general assurances that we need to sign. Is everybody okay with, with that? I have consensus? Okay. Great. Is that okay? Okay. So I'll turn the floor over to Attorney Clausen to give us updates on the changes in the general assurances.
Okay. So, nice to see all of you. I see some of you at Bagel Alley and, I saw you in Mines Falls. Yeah, so part of the community.
Mine Falls.
Mine Falls. Mine Falls?
I'm sorry, man.
Is it?
One S. I'm sorry. Yeah, one S.
All right, I apologize. So the signing of the general assurances is usually not a big deal. It became a big deal this go-around because there was some additional language that was included in the general assurances. Your superintendent did a great job in reaching out to the Department of Education and getting it clarified so that additional language is no longer in the general assurances we've been asked to sign. So what you're left with is a, an acknowledgement that the Nashua School District complies with federal law, and that's it. The, the language that was removed gave the impression, well, it went beyond that, and I think there was some concern from people who looked at it that, that this was something not intended by the general assurances. But that's been fixed, so hopefully you don't have any issues with going forward and signing these general assurances because it is clear that if you don't execute the general assurances, the district's ability to collect federal funds is at risk, and that's a dangerous place to be. So happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you to Dr. Andre for going back to the Department of Education. I know Nashua was not the only district that had some questions. So there was an article in In Depth New Hampshire over the weekend, or maybe Friday, about the angst that school boards are feeling over the general assurances documents. And so I know that, I haven't seen the new forms that were sent out on Tuesday, so my question is, in that article, it said that the executive order language was removed. However, the dear colleague letter part was still there, and that's the part that basically says, like, you can't have any diversity, equity, or inclusion, and we had to sign that we're not doing that. And so my concern is that being the second-most diverse, you know, school district in the state, that we have an obligation to meet our diverse student body in an inclusive and equitable way. So I just want to make sure that we can't, we cannot function without federal and state monies. We just can't. However, I don't like this backdoor racism that is sneaking in to these documents, thanks to Edelman and the Department of Education, especially given that, you know, there are preliminary injunctions against that dear colleague letter, along with the executive orders. So we know that it's not constitutional. So my question is, is that sneaky language still there about the dear colleague letter, or is it all out?
Nope. It's actually, you can see, and I'll pass it around if you guys want to look at it, it's actually been struck through on it. So do you want to take a look at it?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I would feel better if I just laid eyes on it.
Yeah. Pass it around.
Thank you.
So my understanding is that basically the language now goes back to an acknowledgement that you're complying with federal law.
Right. Which obviously we're, we must comply with Title VI and Title IX, and I don't think that anybody would suggest that we wouldn't do that. It's, it's redefining what those things say that has got me freaked out.
Well, you should understand, though, that there, there is an effort afoot to change the interpretation of what some of those federal laws say and mean, but you, as a district, would still be obligated to comply with federal law.
Right.
But I think what needs to be taken out of this, and what has been taken out of it, is a suggestion as to how that determination, which is going to ultimately be made by courts down the road, how that plays out.
Right. So, yeah, I feel best letting the courts figure that out, as opposed to me and my lack of law degree. Thank you.
Tom, could you tell us why it was taken out? What happened?
Yeah, I think the Department of Education got a lot of pushback and, you know, people, like I said, the, the way the, when I read the assurances, the additional information that was included in there was, in my view, you had the statute that was cited, and then you had a reference to other material that gives a interpretation of the statute. And until a federal court makes that decision, I don't think that that's appropriate. You know, we can certainly say, we comply with federal law as federal law currently exists and is interpreted, and, and that's not a problem.
Okay.
So I think that, I think the reason why it was taken out is because I think a lot of districts said, this is not something we're comfortable with.
Okay. Has the Department of Education, New Hampshire Department of Education, made any statement about why, what, how they feel about it being taken out at all?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I, I think there, I think there is still active litigation about the whole issue, but they, not to my knowledge, they've made any statement about that.
And just for everyone's reference, this is in your email if you want to do a...
Yeah, I didn't get it.
It was sent, it was sent out two weeks ago?
But not with the strikes and...
The new...
Upgraded changes.
Or was that just sent to me?
Yeah, we didn't get the new one that was just sent out by the state on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Good. I obviously didn't forward it to you guys because I follow the law. As Tom has told me multiple times, don't email everybody at once.
It's, um...
Well, you'd never actually told me specifically.
It's included in the agenda and attachments for tonight.
It is? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, never mind. I'll just scroll on my own personal computer here. Sorry.
Yeah. And just, I mean, seeing it in person makes it feel real, especially when that's what I have to sign. Okay, so I would be looking for a motion to allow me to sign the general assurances on the Nashua School Board's behalf.
I'll make the motion.
Does anyone want to second that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Any discussion? I did not bring my computer with me tonight because I came rushing here from work, and I didn't stop to get it, so I don't know what you guys were looking at.
The assurances in your packet are the one with the cross-out.
Yeah.
It's the new one.
It is. I just...
It's what was posted, what was posted on Friday.
Yeah.
No, it should, you should have about 160 pages of supporting.
God.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, Tara sends out an email with just the agendas, and then the agenda with the packets.
Yeah, I see it. I'm sorry, I just scrolled right by the crossouts and didn't notice them.
It's okay.
So that's embarrassing as heck.
It starts on page 92 if anybody needs that.
It was a long packet this weekend.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just some, some light reading on a long weekend.
So I will say, so for discussion, I will say I still have reservations about the direction that some of this stuff is going in, but I, I appreciate the work that's been done by the superintendent on making sure that our students come first.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think we're going to have a lot of let's-get-her-done moments in the next couple of years that we're probably not going to be happy with. Right? Not on our behalf. Okay. Thanks, Kristen. Okay, so any other discussion on the general assurances? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for coming down.
Mine falls.
Yes, I always say Mines Falls because you know what? Okay, so this brings us up to our Committee on Finance and Operations, so I will hand the floor over to Ms. Lamphier.
Okay.
I could go back then.
What?
Scrolling.
You're still scrolling?
I, I just have to find my page.
If you hit on the bottom of the pages... It is fun to scroll. Yeah.
Okay, my first motion is to approve the purchase of new cafe tables and chairs from Intelligent Office Interiors at a cost of $26,995, and that funding will come from CTE Tuition Special Revenue Fund Account 91.2258.71000.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey.
Just to clarify that this is for the high schools? Yeah. Okay. Any comments or questions? Mr. Ahmed, and then Ms. Raymond.
Do we know why there's like a significant difference in between the, the quotes? Like, it goes like 33, 32, and then it just drops all the way down to 27. Is it just like...
I'm going to guess we're putting it together like IKEA?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. It was for delivering it and setting it up. The very, I think the very low ones are, there was a difference in price, like some of the places.
In products and...
Yeah. I remember that. Am I correct about that, Mr. Gray? That is accurate.
Okay. Ms. Raymond, then Mr. Claffey.
I heard the question, is it for the high schools? It's just for North?
Just North, okay.
North has a cafe and the culinary. That right? It's just North?
That is correct.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
So I just have a question about the cafe at North. So it said in the memo that there are people who come in to eat at lunch, and I was not aware of that. Is, is that something that we're, we've, we're planning on at some point opening up to the public, or something that is just, like, individual programs will come in?
I think I know the answer, but I'll let Edmund...
I'm just saying, so my, my mother worked at Monty Tech in Pittsburgh, and they have, it's called the Tea Room, and their culinary students do a Friday tea, and the public comes in and you buy lunch there. It's very nice.
Go ahead.
I mean, right now, we're not open to the general public, but I would love to see that happen. I've known other CTE programs that actually cook for a staff and other aspects of it. I think there was a, a little bit of limiting the public coming in in the height of all with security.
Right, because there's no external entrance, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say once there's an external entrance, that would be great, but I wouldn't be opposed to make-ahead meals that your kids can bring home for moms to just heat up at night. I could pick it up when we're out of a board...
You're going to start a new service, right?
Yeah. Take-home meals. Mr. Ahmed?
I would like to say that students don't just go there for lunch. They actually do sell some of the stuff that they make in culinary.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's pretty good. Pretty good stuff.
Yeah. The cookies?
The cookies, I remember they had like empanadas once, like pasta, mac and cheese, stuff like that.
Yes.
There was a night we were here for, I think it was policy, where they had like a chili cook-off with Alverne, and the smells were amazing.
And it tasted good.
Yeah, I missed it.
Okay.
I know.
Left one of these meetings and picked it right up.
Right.
Thank you to the culinary department at North, but there was a couple different ones, and they had to support a sponsor that bought the meat and everything, so like I said, good community work.
Yeah. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the purchase of the new cafe tables, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I know I've been a little chatty tonight because I have a little bit of cold medicine in me, but I do want to remind us that we have to be downtown for another meeting at 7:30.
7:30?
We have to, the meeting will start at 7:30, so we should be wrapping up here around 7, so nobody's speeding down the Broad Street Parkway. I'm not...
I'm not going to get your...
I am. Well, Mr. Claffey was making intense eye contact with me, so I was like, it's you, isn't it?
I just couldn't believe that, man, the speed limit is 30. I mean, it's a Parkway.
I know.
Give us 50.
I know. I agree. Okay, sorry, Ms. Lamphier, go back.
Oh, it's okay. I make a motion to approve the contract with Harriman for the design of a plasma machine hood installation at a cost not to exceed $15,400. The funding will come from CTE Tuition Special Revenue Fund Account 91.2258.71000.
Second.
Any comments or questions about the plasma machine, plasma machine hood? Ms. Raymond?
Yes, so I saw the photographs, and I still don't know what it is, so just a little, what is it? What does it do? What class uses it?
So can I just clarify? It's not the specific hood, and Mr. Smith probably can confirm to make sure I'm sharing the right information, but it's not the specific hood. It's to come in to design the hood for the CTE program. So the picture that was in the quotes is ultimately what the end product will look like once we go ahead and install it.
Okay. What do you do with an arc light plasma machine?
I'm not positive, to be honest with you.
Mr. Smith's here. I mean, it's really cool, and I'm super glad our kids have it.
It'll be in our manufacturing class, so we received the machine a couple years ago, and so we need a hood, so when they cut metal and that aspect of it. So it's part of the manufacturing class, and so that's where it'll be used in really at the, more the industry's standard. So ironically, when we were talking about this a couple weeks ago at FNO, I ran into a, a community manufacturer, and they were saying, hey, do you have X, Y, and Z? I'm like, we actually have that machine, and we get a hood. He's like, perfect. So, so there'll be a strong connection to our community partners, especially in manufacturing. They're looking for stronger connections. So we're looking, the numbers a couple years ago were low in that class, and I think we're going to see a strong rebound in the next couple of years.
Anything to add, Mr. Smith?
No, the superintendent covered it very well. It cuts metal, you know, lots, lots of metal, knife through butter, so to speak, and you need the hood because it puts off a lot of noxious odors and smells and stuff that's not good for you.
Mr. Ahmed?
I was just going to say, I was going to throw a guess out there that it cuts metal.
Yeah. Detective reasoning. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract with Harriman for the design of the plasma machine hood installation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
My next motion is to award roofing repair work at Amherst Street Elementary, Nashua High School North, and Nashua High School South to Viking Roofing of Hollis, New Hampshire, in the amount of $88,415.05, with a project contingency of $5,000. For a total of $93,415.05, funding will come from the school district's deferred maintenance account.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So I know that we are just ramping up our facilities study. Is this something where there are like active leaks or problems that cannot wait for the facility study?
We had, we had ARM consultants look at our roofs at the beginning of the school year, I think.
Okay.
And they, they found some trouble spots that need to be addressed right away.
Okay. Well, we don't want them to get worse, so.
No. That would be troubling. Okay, so did, did Ms. Lamphier get a second?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Claffey did.
Okay, so all those in favor of awarding the roof repair work at Amherst Street North and South to Viking Roofing of Hollis, New Hampshire, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Back to you, Ms. Lamphier.
Okay, my final motion is to approve the fiscal year 25 April transfer report. And if I, actually, I got a second. We did have some questions on this.
I'll give you the second.
Okay. So there was a lot of action in this transfer report. And a lot of that is because it's the end of, getting towards the end of the school year. Each individual school will move stuff around to pay for supplies or furniture and things that they need for the end of the year. But there was, there was one, one motion to move transfer money in particular that Ms. Daniels-Williams was concerned about. It was curriculum, curriculum money. And Dr. Andre was going to come back to us with more information about that. Yep, we have some additional information on it. So what ended up happening is there was a transfer between our subscriptions line, which is a 6-1 account, as well as our educational supply line and testing materials. Again, another 6-1 account. I only mentioned the 6-1s because we look at the reports as the first two digit from a roll-up standpoint. What I had explained at Finance and Operations is we actually, from an overall process standpoint, didn't necessarily have to do the transfer. But we did the transfer because of the substantial amount of funds that were being moved out of subscriptions into testing materials and educational supplies. Some of the additional materials, and I'll let Mr. Poska hop in in just a second, is from the Amplify Science. Some additional kits were purchased and are being purchased. Some reading materials and books in more educational kits for science and math empowered.
Mr. Poska?
Sure, just to follow up on that. As Ms. Gray talked about, the beginning of the year, there was some, when the monies were put into the curriculum, there were extra, for whatever reason, there was a lot of money put into subscriptions. So we wanted to move those around to accurately reflect where we're pulling the money from. When we got to this, we had our, you know, four items that we wanted to purchase. Currently, we're doing some math professional development at the middle school. Along with that professional development, we had the opportunity to purchase some kits that won with that professional development. So that was part of the curriculum purchase there. At the beginning, actually last year, for the Amplify Science, we needed some additional materials for our grade four and five kits. As we started the year, we didn't, we thought we might be able to get through the year without having to purchase them. But as we got later in the year, realized we wanted to get to the end, we are gonna have to purchase some of those, remaining of those kits. So that was already part of the budget. There were some grade eight novels that we needed to purchase. Was a smaller pound, where we didn't have enough books for some of us schools. And then finally, formative assessment is part of Nuzella. We currently utilize it. Our ELL department is using it significantly and wanted to continue with some of the work in creating some of the formative assessments they're putting online on their platform that kind of goes with their elevation platform, which they also utilize. So it's an opportunity to make sure they could do that work and continue with that work over the summer as well as we get ready for the next school year. So we already have it in place, and this allows us to continue with that work.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. And I know Ms. Lamphier touched on this during her meeting. But I was particularly struck by the, looks to me, a million dollars that were transferred over to contract services and legal services for overages. And I'm just, I'm concerned about what this means for next year.
Yeah.
And the budget that you're going to talk about in an hour and a half.
Yeah, if I can hop in, if you don't mind. I think it's a fair concern. I think through Finance and Operations, we've really, and since I've joined the team, been saying the two biggest buckets that I've been concerned about this year and as we move forward, is our contract services related to special education and our out-of-district tuition. You're going to start to see this month too, so next month when we meet in June, there'll be some additional transfers out of full-time wages into contract services in order to fill that budgetary constraints. In addition, out-of-district tuition as well. So as I explained in Finance and Operations, you know, this year, we're gonna have to move quite a bit of money out of wages over into those two other lines. As I shared at Finance and Ops, my forecast right now is showing we'll probably have roughly $100,000 left over or remaining at the end of this fiscal year. Now again, there's about $5 million in benefits going back to the city that I'm projecting. But as we move forward and next year and the budget tonight, once it's approved, we are moving more money to special revenue to hopefully offset some of those costs. But again, I think it's two big line items that we need to continue as a district to look at and continue to put more money in there. And again, from a contract service standpoint, if we didn't hire folks, we're able to move the wages. We're not able to move the benefits piece.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So I guess I have a question. So I know that it's really tricky when we put money into like special revenues, what we can pull it out for? So if we're taking money from wages that are supposed to be for teachers, and we're putting it over there for other things, will we absolutely be able to pay contract services out of that? Is my question. Because if we're looking at contract services and transportation being our biggest thing, but we put the extra money from this year into special revenue, and we can only pull it out for certain things, I just want to make sure that like, we're evening out and not just saving up for a rainy day.
So I want to clarify to make sure I truly understand what you're asking. So from a contract service standpoint, in our operating budget, we are able to move wage money for positions that were not filled because we needed, instead, we went ahead and did a contract service. So we can move that wage money out of full-time wages into contract services in operating, our operating budget. Special revenue is a totally separate bucket. And special revenue is set up for a specific purpose. We do have a special revenue account related to special education. We go ahead and receive revenue within that special revenue account for tuition like Brentwood or our Signs of Learning program. There has been an increase in the participation in that over the last two years. Later in the agenda, you'll see that there's a new business item or a new business topic coming forward related to special revenue, specifically special education. So I just want to be clear that the message is removing some of the wages into contract services for positions that were not filled. We are utilizing special revenue for a specific purpose that it was set up for. Revenue is coming in, and expenses are being offset for special education related to contract services and out-of-district tuition.
Can I, can I just add? A few months ago, I was really concerned about the special, special revenue fund for special education. I didn't want to see it drained, and I was not really sure of how much money was in it. But, you know, at our last meeting, Mr. Gray gave us the, you know, the information about what's in each account. And we actually have a lot more coming in to our special education revenue fund because of Brentwood and because of Signs of Learning. So even though we're gonna use more of that money than we originally budgeted for at the beginning of the year, we're not taking too much because our, the services we provide of special, for special education in our district has been growing. So, so although contract services is a black hole that we need to take care of, our special revenue fund isn't in danger this year.
Yeah, just again, too, from a budgetary standpoint, and we had said we would do some type of training working session if, if needed around special revenue accounts. With that being said, next year, we do have about 1.2 million sitting in special revenue that we are anticipating expenses coming out of there. So throughout the budget presentation, we did put money in, excuse me, we put money in operating budget, but we also put a decent amount in the special revenue as well to offset some of the expenses.
Can I just, I just wanted to add that our expenses this year have been so much more than we expected when we started this year. And this is Ms. Gray's first school year. And she's had, her and her team have had to do a lot of really hard work to make sure that our books continue to be balanced, even though we have, you know, we have to move money around and make sure that everything is looking good and, and fiscally responsible. And that's something that if we had, if we had been budgeted properly for this year, she, her and her team wouldn't have to do that work. So they've been doing a great job, and I just wanted to give you some kudos.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think it's honestly, it's a combination. And, you know, from us as a district, I think those are the two biggest buckets that are challenging at times to truly budget for. Tuition out of district is such a fluid line item that we could have two kids move in tomorrow. That costs us, you know, a half a million dollars. That is out of our control. I think Dr. Andre and I and the team have had plenty of conversations of, we probably need more money in, out of district tuition, for sure. And it's something we'll continue to monitor and work closely with. But again, if a, if a child moves in tomorrow, we do have to support them.
Dr. Andre?
Catchy.
Instead of yawns, it's coughing.
I just want to, again, kudos to Ms. Gray and her team. But I just also want to just clarify, just, you know, more of a defense of if we budgeted properly, right? Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to phrase it in a negative way.
I don't think you meant it that way, but I just, I don't want it to be misinterpreted again, because we have a very.
Crystal ball was better.
Yeah, well, it's very fluid because it's student needs, right? It's a snapshot in time. So we're, you know, hopefully, the city will adopt the budget tonight. But it's May, right? So there might be things a year from now that are unanticipated expenses or resources that we need for students. So that's why I think it's just more that we see the transfers going out. And again, I think we do, we always look at student first, and we put, put the money where it's at. So I don't think it's any time of it's improper or of, or we didn't have a good budget. It's just snapshots in time, and how do we look at that data and then put the money where it is? So again, kudos to Mr. Gray and her team. And then a year ago, really, you know, being transparent. I think we were saying a year ago to Mr. Donovan of how good he built budgets over year after year. But the needs of our students are changing, and we just have to be a little more dynamic and flexible. And we always budget conservatively, especially in like the special revenue fund. Like we were, you know, bringing in more money than we were spending. So it's hard to, to transfer that money later on. And then you don't want to create a structural deficit. You don't want to deplete that. So I think we're in a good place, and I really appreciate the, the board's support of our budgets, the conversations.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Yes. I, I still have a, my question still stands. So we're moving money from the FTEs over to special revenue to cover contract services?
Oh, sorry.
So please explain.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but I just want to be clear. We are not moving money out of wages into special revenue. We are moving money out of wages in our operating budget into contract services in our operating budget.
And then you're taking the money set aside for the contract services through the special revenue and holding on to that? Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, I don't want to, it's so technical. But what you're saying is special revenue, we have one for special education, and we have a regular one. What money is going over to the special revenue that we're talking about tonight? That's what I'm talking about. I, I'm but that's what she, that's what she, okay. So can you explain to me what you said to be at the beginning?
Ms. Daniels-Williams? The special revenue fund, the money in the special revenue fund comes from the fees that people pay to go to Brentwood and Signs of Learning. That's not money that we put in the budget at all. It's all from out of our district that comes to us. So that's our revenue that we keep in a, in the special revenue fund. So we budget every year to take a certain amount of money out of that special revenue fund to cover our special education expenses. But because special education, education expenses continue to grow, especially because we can't hire people, we have to do the contract services, and because we have more money coming in to, from Brentwood and Signs of Learning because they're growing programs, we actually have more money in the special revenue fund that we can access if we, if we make this, if we approve the motion later on. So that, so we will have some money coming from the special revenue fund in addition to what was already budgeted. And then we also need money from wages to special education contract services because the expenses are just so much. And we've been watching this all year and seeing that we're going to be short. So we knew that we were going to have to move money around. And I, I just don't want anyone to think that, that the administration is doing anything that's not completely above board.
I'm just asking, what? Can you explain the process of what you're asking us to do with the FTE money tonight? And why is important to me to have that answer? Is because FTE is full-time educators. So I want to know where that money is going, where you're transferring that tonight? What, I know that you're moving it from one place to the other place to the next place. I just want you to explain that process to me today. That was the question.
Okay, let me take another step back. So think of it as two separate buckets. You have your operating expenses, and you have your operating budget, which is where 95% of your full-time wages, your FTEs that you're talking about, is budgeted in our operating budget. Within operating, we have benefits, we have contract services, we have out-of-district tuition, all within our operating budget. In addition to that second bucket, you have your special revenue. Special revenue, again, is set up for a specific purpose. You can only utilize that revenue and expenses for that specific purpose. We do have one for special education. As Regan explained, we go ahead and pull in revenue related to our programs. And then there's expenses to offset some of those special education expenses, such as contract services and out-of-district tuition. So you have two sets, I would call it, or two buckets of money that you are able to go ahead and offset those costs. In contract services, we have some openings that we were not able to fill as a district. Therefore, we had to contract service those staff. There's several other reasons why we have contract service. It's not just staff. Sometimes it's a kid needs OT or PT services. That is occupation, that is a contract service. Some of the large transfers that Ms. Raymond was asking about is to move wage money that were from unfilled positions into other buckets that we need. It's something we do as a district every single year to offset that cost. So we're able to move that wage money into contract service and out-of-district tuition. Those are our two biggest buckets that we've been discussing this full year.
Does that answer your question?
Let all rest. Because the buckets of where it goes in, where, where does the bucket, what are those two buckets that it goes into that we're switching around today? That was the question. You know what I'm saying? Like, you're saying that the full-time, the FTE, the full-time educator money is going to pay for the contract services that we didn't hire. Understood. Where is, and then we're gonna save some money and put it somewhere else? So that's what I, that's my question. Can you explain that part?
I think I, where, I don't think I heard where. I think I, where, I don't think I heard where saving money, where's the save? I think there's two separate conversations. And there's, we're talking about the operating transfer report. And that's everything from one report that we go on a monthly basis, that long spreadsheet, and we move things around, right? That, that's a transfer report. And we're able to move from wages into contract services. Right? And so that's the first part. When you're saying we're saving money and assigning money somewhere else, can you clarify? Because I think maybe I'm not, or we're not understanding?
That there's two special revenues. There's, there's one special revenue that we're putting money into and we're taking money out of the special revenue for education, for special education that we've gained through Brentwood to pay for the contract services.
So that's later, like, that's further down on the, on the agenda, right? Is about moving special education, special appropriation.
That's not part of this motion, right? That's something else that we haven't gotten to yet.
So that's later on about how do we access special revenue accounts, right? So there's one thing about transfers within the operating budget. And then there's another aspect when we go into budgeting around how do we access special revenue? And that's what we'll be tapping into special revenue because at the beginning of the year, we said we were going to only spend $400,000. We need to spend $800,000 and we need a special appropriation. So I don't know where, like, that bucket, like, what you're talking about is going in, but that extra $400,000 will offset the cost of contract services.
In the motion that's in front of the board currently is to truly approve the budget transfers that were in the finance and ops meeting. Budget transfers? The budget transfers are only transferred between operating budget. Budget transfers, you cannot do a budget transfer between operating and special revenue.
Thank you. That, that was my question. And I, I guess having more information, I'm, I'm, I'm still not clear, but thank you for your time and effort, everyone, for trying to explain it. Because my thing was just, it's moving from one place to another place and then we're going to refill that place. So I just wanted to know what the process was. But thank you for discussing with us the 6,100 grouping.
I think I'm good.
Okay, so to go back to the motion to approve the fiscal, the April transfer report, I'm assuming we have no other questions? Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us up to committee on policy. The first readings, I wonder if we can just direct people to read them on their own just to save time? Would that be okay?
I have two things.
Yeah.
So the first thing is the data governance plan, which is not a first reading or second reading. It's kind of its own thing.
Yeah.
That we need to act on tonight. But as far as the first reading, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Read it. If you have questions now, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll take it up again next time.
No, read, read through them. Email Heather if you have any suggestions. Show up to the meeting if you want to, but...
But I do have to make a motion on the data governance plan and I have...
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we were all in consensus, that we wouldn't go through each of the first readings just to save on time. So the floor goes to you, Ms. Raymond.
Great. All right, so I do want to make a motion to approve the update to the data governance plan and security practices, and then I'll speak very briefly.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Lampier. So we have a policy, and I forget the letters, but we have a policy that says that when the data governance plan needs to be updated, it's the policy committee that reviews it with the director of IT, which is an interesting policy because some of us on policy are not particularly tech savvy. And the other part of it is that the data governance plan and security practices is now a confidential document because it deals a lot with cybersecurity and also student data, which must be private. So we had an extensive discussion with Dr. Rodriguez, our director of IT during the policy committee meeting, where he walked us through it. He answered some questions about technology for those of us who don't understand words and the names of things. And at the end of it, the policy committee felt comfortable with his explanations of some of the legal changes that are reflected in the data governance plan. If there are further questions, I don't have the answers. Mr. Pasca might, but we would need to ask them in non-public.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Does anybody else?
And, oh, and Ms. Consella did email everyone a confidential copy of the data governance plan in its own attachment so that it wouldn't leak out accidentally.
Mr. Johnson?
I just, I had missed policy that night, but I did have a chance to go through the confidential document we were sent. And yeah, there's a lot of language in it, you know, that's, you know, can be difficult for people to follow. But, but I saw no issues with it in my chance to review it.
Oh, good.
And my apologies for keeping Mr. Johnson. I didn't stop talking for many, many hours.
Well, I said interviews and then...
Interview, we had a lot of stuff going on, but then we started chit-chatting. And I was like, are you said for policy?
I know.
Just kept talking.
I, I very much missed Mr. Johnson's expertise because the technical jargon, I just don't, I don't know it. But to Dr. Rodriguez's credit, he's really good at taking technical jargon and putting it in, you know, layman's terms.
Yeah.
And I feel confident that the district has learned quite a bit from the cybersecurity thing that happened a couple of years ago and that we have a data governance plan that is responsive to a variety of different situations. Yes.
Yeah, and I'll add that this is, I mean, this is extremely thorough. Like, this whole document, it covers just about anything you could think of.
Yeah, everything from natural disasters to a security attack, which it's really cool. And there are parts of it that can be accessible if someone wanted to do a right-to-know request, but there's a significant amount of it that has to be redacted.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, any other questions? Who made, who seconded that? Ms. Lampier, was that you?
Yes, that was me.
Okay, thank you. So all those in favor of approving the update to the data governance plan and security practices, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
All right. And so my second thing is that there are two competing bills at the State House right now. One is on the governor's desk and the other one is still with the Senate regarding cellphones in schools. One is a bell-to-bell ban and the other one is a, has some exceptions that are allowed. And so the, and the expectation at the State House is that whichever bill passes and whichever bill the governor assigns will be in place for when we go back to school at the end of August. So that gives us like no time at all to create a policy. So our next policy meeting, we have decided will be a work session on cellphones. And so that is on June 17th, which is the first day of summer break at 6:00 PM. And I really wanted to try and find a night before school got out, but it turns out that June, there's some school-related event every single night. So that's the best we could do. But I do invite people to come. We've set it up as a work session. There is a group of teachers and administrators who has been working on a policy. Hopefully, some of them will be able to come and explain what they're recommending to us. I don't know if we'll have the bill from the governor at that point, but I would think so because she has indicated it's a priority for her. But we will need to vote on it and put it in place before school starts at the end of August. So the next couple of school board meetings, we'll have to have cellphones on the agenda to get our first and second meeting in and to make sure that the community is heard. So just the invitation to everyone out there on the board and all the parents and staff, start your school vacation by coming to policy in this room on June 17th at 6:00 PM to talk about cellphones. We'll have whatever we have from the state at that point.
Enjoy some free air conditioning.
Woo!
Okay, so this, do you have any updates, Ms. Prin, for curriculum and education? Okay. This brings us up to our committee on human resources. Mr. Johnson did a great job running the meeting.
Sure I did.
It's a lot tougher than it looks. But I will hand the floor over to you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, first thing is that, wait, I have to do a vote, don't I, for the...
Yep.
Suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules so we may discuss human resources. Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
No, that's okay. So yeah, so we had our personal recommendation, looking for a motion to pass that.
To approve the personnel recommendations of today.
Approve the personal recommendation.
Was it the same in the packet as what we handed out?
Yeah, we handed out that thing.
The resignations and the retirements?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the same?
Yeah, there were no changes to that. The only additional one was the food service.
All right, so it doesn't have to be dated today?
No, 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 no. It was not. There was one addition.
It is different.
Yes.
So it's the one dated today, please?
Yes, the one dated May 27th, 2025, updated personal recommendation that everyone should have received tonight.
Sorry about that.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. So all those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations from May 27th, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Okay, we'd also like to make the administrative recommendations. We had a motion to elect Alicia Hansen Pro to the position of principal at Birch Hill Elementary School at an annual salary of $105,400.
Second.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
We also had a motion to elect Rossum Kline to the position of principal at Led Street Elementary School at an annual salary of $106,900.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
And finally, we had a recommendation to elect Mary Benoit to the position of food service director effective June 2nd, 2025, at an annual salary of $88,856.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Okay, HR's concluded unfinished business. I will hand the floor over to Dr., oh, just kidding, we just did that one. That's the general assurances. And then can we get an update on the strategic plan, please?
Yeah, just a quick update around the strategic plan. Last week, we started our focus groups. We had two student meetings on the 21st with high school students at both North and South, as well as meeting with the high school staff, late elementary parents in the community. We have a series of focus groups tomorrow with district leadership, business and nonprofits, middle school staff, early elementary staff, as well as at night, the municipal, with city in the BOE. And that's at 6 o'clock tomorrow night for us at South Lecture Hall. So it's, just for people that are listening, especially our teachers, I know there was some conflicts last week with high school and some elementary. They're welcome to go to any school for their voice to be heard. The schools tomorrow, middle school staff is at McCalla at 3:15 and early elementary schools are at Led Street tomorrow at 3:15. If you can't make it, convenience-wise, teachers can go to either location. That being said, there's, we're just waiting for our survey to come back from TLA. It's being translated right now into multiple languages. We're expecting to have that survey back tomorrow and then we'll be pushing that out as soon as we get it. Social media, emails, and that survey. We'll also garner a lot of input from the community. From there, we'll have a standing strategic planning committee of approximately 30 members. They will be meeting five times over the summer, starting June 4th. They'll meet June 4th, June 18th, July 9th, July 16th, July 23rd, and August 13th. And that'll be a standing committee to review the data coming in from the focus groups, the data from the survey, as well as any of our internal data. And then we're hoping by the end of August that we'll have the bones of a strategic plan that we'll bring forth in front of this committee. So that's where we're at with strategic planning. And there's also a facility study going on. As you know, we contract with Herriman. Jamie Olet is leading that charge once again. And he's in the process of meeting with all of the building principals to walk through their needs and concerns in the building. And he's had one meeting so far with us on, as a leadership team of where we want to go. So two exciting projects going on. We've garnered a lot of input over the next three months. It'll be a busy summer, but I think everything's moving forward.
I also have a question, Ms. Gilliam, Ms. Daniels.
Okay. I, I try to rearrange my schedule as often as I can when, when suddenly Board of Ed meeting issues come up, but unfortunately, I cannot go to any of the meetings tomorrow afternoon or tomorrow night. However, that does not mean that I am not very interested because I am in being on the strategic planning committee going forward. So I just wanted to make that public because my lack of appearance tomorrow doesn't indicate my interest. Thank you.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
And I just had a question. Are we going to have another meeting for the community and the parents? Because I know that there was a lot of uproar about the fact that they got it the day before the 21st. So I was just wondering, before we pick that 30, would we put, could we possibly please put it out to the community and the parents again because they are stakeholders?
Yep, no, absolutely. I think between the survey and then we've talked to TLA to see if we schedule another meeting. It's been really difficult between all the community events going on, people's schedules. So we just wanted to make sure we were moving forward, but if we need another night, we'll have another night.
Can they possibly come to the ones that are for the teachers that you just mentioned?
Yeah, that's tomorrow, though. So, so I think, again, is...
Isn't there one on the 28th?
That's tomorrow.
But already May 28th?
Yes.
But I think there was an, there was a, something was posted last week and then I got a reminder to my mom email today about three different ones happening tomorrow.
Yeah. So we talked to TLA of scheduling another community forum. We want to make sure that, again, when we have teachers in a room or our business partners, that it's, everybody has a venue. So we did talk about another date going forward. So, but we strongly encourage people to fill out the survey as well.
Just a little addition to that. So I'm very interested on being on that committee as well, but the other, the other part is like, do we have to, like, vote to put it back to the, to the teachers? I mean, to the parents and the community members? Or does it just automatically yes or no?
What do you mean by vote?
So can we, because before we put it out and we pick our 30, I want to make sure that we have at least spoke to the parents because, you know, that's who we serve. That's who elected all of us.
Yeah, I, I think the aspect of the people serving on the committee, like, we've reached out to building principals and that aspect of, I think there's two different conversations. One, who's on the standing committee and then a public forum.
I'm talking about the public forum to get the community members, the parents, which are the stakeholders' input. I just want to make sure that...
They can happen simultaneously.
Thank you. I, I love that answer.
My question is if parents who are not English-speaking, are we in charge of getting the interpreters or is our, the company that we're contracting to?
No, so it's, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure we have those.
Yep.
Okay, this brings us up to our new business. So you get the floor again. I took your, I'm sorry, I came, I, again, I...
Do you want me to hop in?
Yeah. So this is a recommendation to approve resolution RA 25171. So this is a recommendation to approve Resolution R 25171 relative to a supplemental appropriation of $400,000 of the fiscal year 2025 on unanticipated special revenue, unanticipated special education local related to, local-related revenue into Special Revenue Fund Number 2257 Special Education Local. And this is a request from the city as a special appropriation. This needs to go in front of the Board of Aldermen once it's approved here. And we can, as we were discussing earlier, Mr. Gray can talk about why we're moving this once we get a second and open it up for a discussion.
I can make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
So now discussion.
We want some clarity.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure there's questions. So, related to the special revenue account, the 2257 Special Education Local. So, so far, we've brought in a little over $400,000 more in tuition than we anticipated. So because of the dollar amount, we do need to do a supplemental appropriation, A, to be able to accept those additional funds, and then also, B, what we're looking to do with that additional $400,000 is to be able to spend that money for fiscal year 25 related to any special education costs we need. The two buckets that I'm anticipating we will spend that money on in special revenue is contract services and out-of-district tuition. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first question is, when people pay in tuition to attend the other districts, when other districts pay tuition in to attend Brentwood or Signs of Learning, does that money come into us, or does it go to the city? It's, because I know we're kind of enmeshed in some ways. So that's the first question. And then the second question is, is it the city asking for the resolution, or are we asking the city? Because the "are" thing threw me for a loop.
So I'll answer.
I don't care what order you answer them in, whatever makes most sense.
So to answer your first question, related to the tuition, so yes, the sending schools that are sending other students here, that tuition does come to us directly as the school district. We deposit it into special revenue. And I think last year, the Brentwood tuition increased slightly. So that could be, that could be one of the reasons why we're seeing some additional revenue than what we anticipated. Plus, there's just more interest in Brentwood and Signs of Learning.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I mean, that was the point of expanding Brentwood and putting them at the Factory Street location was so that we could have a greater capacity to meet our students, but also open it up outside of Nashua. So to me, this is a sign of success. So I'm excited about that.
To answer your second question, so we did reach out to city and corporate council on the process in which we would have to do this. So we worked with Attorney Bolton and then John Griffin over at City to say what's the right process. Because it's a change in revenue of what was approved a year ago, it has to be approved by the Board of Education, go before the Board of Aldermen. They have to have a public hearing as well on it, so the timeline.
It increases the overall budget.
Yeah.
By adding it into our budget.
But are people going to be like, no, don't accept this tuition?
Either.
You have to give them the opportunity to say that.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So just procedurally, it goes, the Board of Education needs to approve it tonight. And then it'll go in front of the Board of Aldermen. They need a certain amount of days to post it, have a public hearing before it's resolved at their level.
So are saying yes to this motion now just moves the question of, do we accept this revenue from our table to the Aldermen's table so that they can have their public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
My chair is squeaky.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving Resolution R 25171 relative to the supplemental appropriations of $400,000 of fiscal year 2025 unanticipated special education local-related revenue into Special Revenue Fund Number 2257, quote, "special education local," say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So for the next one, I'll have Mr. Smith come up as well, so he can, we're looking for a recommendation to approve the purchase of a M27 sidewalk plow from HP Fairfield at no cost to exceed. I don't think it's $221, Mr. Smith. I think it's, I think there's a couple zeros after that. And then why it's coming now and why it didn't go before FNO.
I'll make that motion. I love clean sidewalks, as we all know from my obnoxious emails all winter long. Is that $221,231.50?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you need a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lambfier. So what's this sidewalk plow going to do?
It's going to plow sidewalks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
We have two of these. One is not working very well. We basically got through the winter with one sidewalk plow. Luckily, it was a fairly mild winter. But we've been running with two, and the one was already on the SURF schedule to be replaced this coming fiscal year. But the city has found money this fiscal year. They're also concerned with, apparently with tariffs and prices going up. So that's why they want to jump now and spend, they were looking for big-ticket items, and I said, we have a big-ticket item. So it's something we definitely need, and it's, it just replaces one that we already had that is basically falling apart.
So just to reiterate to Mr. Smith's point, this was on the SURF purchase for fiscal year '26. Because they have some money left over, they're now willing to go ahead and allow us to purchase it this fiscal year of '25. And we need to go ahead and kind of move quickly, because it's coming out of the SURF budget so that the city can go ahead and proceed with the purchase.
And we also have a quote that expires before the next Board of Ed meeting, so we have to move tonight.
Ms. Raymond.
Two questions. What does SURF stand for?
Capital Equipment and Reserve Fund.
Ah, thank you. And second is, which sidewalks exactly are, are we plowing with this device? It's not like, like the whole safe routes to school for, like, Led Street, are the ones that I'm constantly complaining about not being plowed, right? That's the city?
So we've sat down, we sit down with the city every fall to talk about who's plowing what. Typically, we do the two high schools. We will do Led Street, and we go across the, well, the other high school. Then we also do a portion of Broad Street. Up to the Hollis Line.
Oh, wow, that's a long way on Broad Street. How much of Led Street are we, are you doing?
I think at least up to the school itself.
So from Central?
From Central.
Up to Led Street?
Okay.
And you guys stop before they get to Central Office, so nobody can walk in?
We blow all the snow right on the Central Office.
Right in front of the doors. Right behind your cars.
Are there other, are there other schools that have been having issues with students walking in busy streets?
Yeah.
That's just my biggest concern here. I'm going to vote for this because it's, we need it. But I continue to worry about our students walking in the streets, because we have schools that don't have a safe route.
So I noticed this winter, DPW did, I mean, I think they put extra manpower out this year to clear off sidewalks for our students walking in. Definitely with the students changing over to fairgrounds, and there were more walkers. There was a more dedicated focus to definitely those new walkers. And then there was an issue with McCarthy, right, going up the sidewalk? And they weren't able, because that's not a city road, right, so they weren't going to do it? Is that what they said?
It actually is a city road.
Up to the gates.
But they had a resource issue, and they couldn't get to it. We were going to go there anyway to plow on the school itself.
Yeah.
So we've taken it over.
Okay. We talked about that in JSSBC, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it is a city road, but you can access it from the neighborhood behind it.
Yeah.
I mean, not that those neighbors want a trail of cars.
No, with a walking down. And then, yeah, I've just, I've been noticing downtown, DPW did a lot more this year than, I think they're probably better staffed and have more equipment, so I was quite pleased.
Great.
As a, as a constant complainer, I was quite pleased. Ms. Julia?
As someone who's lived across the street from a path to New Searl School for 41 years, DPW does an amazing job of clearing that sidewalk. Granted, our street is not a very busy one, but it's a, it's a well-walked path to New Searl School. And sometimes they come, like, at midnight. I mean, they just make sure that it's done before the kids go to school, and I'm always impressed. I peek out my window and watch them.
Yeah, me too. Okay, so all those, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the purchase of a MTZ sidewalk plow from HP Fairfield at a cost not to exceed $221,231.50 from the SURF account, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Excellent. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. And the last new business is looking for a recommendation to approve the MOU with the traveling tooth fairies sailing smiles across New Hampshire for the 25-26 program.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, Ms. Prin's seconding.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, you got it this time.
They're so great.
Yeah, and she's so energetic. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the MOU with the traveling tooth fairies for the 25-26 school year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us up to our liaison reports. We had Ed Council. Mr. Johnson, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll briefly touch on it, because I think the bigger thing is we, we'll have a further discussion on the middle schools and the feedback we received and the report that Mr. Hoffman did and with Ms. Daniels Williams.
Yes.
So we'll have to have a moment to review that at an upcoming Board of Ed meeting. But it was very thorough and very involved in what was going on. We also had a discussion about the cell phone usage, which obviously, we know the state is coming down with their thing, and so policy will be busy doing that. And any teachers who are interested, come to policy on that last day of school, because I do know from hearing from teachers, it is a big concern. And, yeah, that'll do it for today.
Okay, excellent. We will come up, we just didn't have the time tonight to review the report. So it'll be on a meeting in the future, probably not the June 2 one, but.
The following, yeah, probably once we get to summer, we can have a good look at that report.
We approved, I see Heather's face. We will in a second. Yeah, all things contract-related. I have a feeling Mr. Hoffman's going to come up, and I have an apology to give him before he gets there, so, yeah. So June 2, clear your calendars. You can't go.
Every other Tuesday night, I have another job, and that's.
That's a Monday.
Oh, it's, oh, I thought it was Thursday. Okay, great. No, I can.
Yay.
Oh, I'm excited.
Okay, so we'll review, we'll review that report at a later date. And then, I think, I think that was it for liaison reports, right? We didn't have JSSBC.
We did.
We did have, I was there. And it was lots of information. All the updates are happening. Ms. Daniels, want to give an update on JSSBC?
So the schools are being, we rebuilt the ground that we took the portable classrooms off of. We have done some more work over to Stellows. And we are proceeding with the work that has already been started at the elementary schools, the two elementary schools. So we're real thankful to Herriman for all that they're doing for our schools.
Yes.
A quick question.
Ms. Raymond, then Ms. Julia.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms.
No, go ahead.
On Stellows, we talked about buying the chair pads, the chair foot things at the JSSBC.
At JSSBC last week.
So are they definitely going to be in by June?
They're already here, and they're already stored at Stellows, and they will be used for our graduations this year.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to add that I was at New Searls on Friday, and their secure entry work is, like, really going at it.
It's happening fast.
Really quickly, and I was happy to see that.
Yeah, I was there last week for the fifth grade yearbook, and, yeah, it was, all the kids are trying to stare in through the window to see what's going on, so.
Excellent. Okay, this brings us up to our second public comment. Alex Homola. Name and address in three minutes, please.
Brand-new information. Hello, Alex Homola, Sixth Air Street. Gotta try to just woo-saw. I'm sorry if I get ragey. Sidewalks. Glad your neighborhood was plowed properly, not mine. I reached out to DPW, I reached out to City Hall. We still had staff members helping and shoveling every morning so our kids could get to school safely. Very infuriating. I had to teach M how to walk in the street safely this year, because we could not take our sidewalk, because it was all ice. So, that said, communication. We've talked about this. I feel a little bit like a broken record. I know I've said this before to all you lovely folks. When you subscribe to the BOE website, and I use Google Calendar like so many of us do, it goes on my calendar, syncs with my family, it does not update. I was unaware that tonight's meeting started at 5:30. I had an email from Google this morning at 5:00 a.m. saying 6 o'clock. Nothing updates. So you know I'm here. This is not news. I was unaware. I am paying attention. What does that say for our families that don't have that ability? It doesn't bode well. We have Blackboard. The city uses a similar system. It's just, it's 2025. We've got to, we've got to get better at this. I attended the Strategic Planning Forum last week, and the same thing came up. Everybody in that room, all of 25 of us, I think I counted, communication was our biggest thing. It's just, I know we all want that. I know I'm preaching to the choir, but it's got to get better, because it just doesn't appear to be transparent either. It comes across very much the opposite. And I don't think that is intended. I really hope it's not. So I'm just going to leave it at that. Communication, do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman? And Gary, I wanted to apologize to you, because I sent an email that said that we would review the contracts tonight, and then scheduling got messed up, and we couldn't dedicate the time. So I wanted to apologize for telling you that we would review and then saying, we'll do it at another meeting, so.
Thank you. Gary Hoffman, 38 Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. A few hundred teachers are a little disappointed, too. I think they wanted to come tonight.
Yeah.
But I let them know that it would be next week. The good news is, last week, the parent educator unit, our Unit B, did pass the tentative agreement with the Board of Education negotiating team. And about an hour and a half ago, the teacher unit, Unit A, did pass the tentative agreement with the, with the, with the board negotiating team. So both contracts did pass my two units, and we just urge that on June 2, we really hope that the board does the same by unanimous vote. We think that these are two good contracts that will make our district stronger for many years to come. I do also want to thank Rob Johnson for bringing up the Ed Council report. I know that June is a very busy month. My, my calendar is very full as well. And, but, you know, if we want to, maybe in July, take some time to unpack that. Ms. Shwanda Daniels Williams and I did spend some time on that report. And we think that there's some good lessons to be learned. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us up to our board member comments. I'll start over here with you, Ms. Daniels Williams.
No comment.
Okay, Ms. Julia?
Well, I'm glad that the contracts are going to be voted on next Monday night and not Tuesday night, so I can be here. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I. I voted nay on something earlier tonight because of concerns of the way our, our state and federal government are taking laws that exist to protect children, to protect people, and trying to twist them into their own sort of perverted thing. And we have to take a stand when presented with these things. I'm glad that we got that, those lines stricken from that, but we have to do more. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey?
Don't get a ticket driving to City Hall.
Thank you. Ms. Prin?
No comment.
Ms. Raymond?
Just briefly, the library's summer reading program is kicking off on June 20th. And when I planned to say this, I didn't know we were going to meet on the 2nd. So I thought this was the last chance. So anyways, they have some great programs this summer for all ages. There's an app that you load and you can log your, your student's or your child's reading. And then there's like a raffle and it's very exciting and fun. And I really recommend that everybody with kids look into it.
Excellent. Ms. Lamphier?
No comment tonight. I hope everyone has a next week.
Okay, so I'm looking for a
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Thank you, Ms. I'll let Ms. Lamphier decide who seconded that.
Aye.
Julia made it. Okay, Ms. Daniels-Williams. All those in favor of journeying, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.